Thank you, everybody, for joining us. We've got, first item of business is we've got to swear in two of the new trustees to the Board, Corey Galloway and Whitney Barrett. Corey was elected in the May election, as was Whitney, and Whitney, those of you who will remember, had been serving previously as an appointed member of the Board. Because of the way this works, our other new appointee who's here, Sarah Langley, will be sworn in at the July meeting.
With Dan.
And Daniel Bonet.
And Daniel Bonet, who is also going to be serving on the Board, will be sworn into the July meeting as well. So with that, we're going to move to the oaths of office. And I'll swear in Corey first. After you told me to use the microphone, of course I didn't. "I, Corey Galloway, do solemnly swear or affirm..."
"I, Corey Galloway, do solemnly swear or affirm..."
"...that I will support the Constitution of the United States..."
"I'll support the Constitution of the United States."
"...and the Constitution of the State of New York."
"And the Constitution of the State of New York."
"...and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Board of Library Trustees..."
"I'll faithfully discharge the Board duties, the Library of Trustees."
"...for a term to expire June 30th, 2019."
"For a term expires June 30th, 2019."
"In New Rochelle, New York, according to the best of my ability."
"In New Rochelle, New York, according to the best of my ability."
You are official. Do you want to sign? We just need to sign the paperwork. And thank you, former trustee Mar, for notarizing these. Whitney?
Yes.
Sure, I don't do this too often. "I, Whitney Barrett, do solemnly swear or affirm..."
"I, Whitney Barrett, do solemnly swear or affirm..."
"...that I will support the Constitution of the United States..."
"That I will support the Constitution of the United States..."
"...and the Constitution of the State of New York."
"And the Constitution of the State of New York."
"...and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office..."
"And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office..."
"...of Board of Library Trustees..."
"Of Board of Library Trustees."
"...for a term to expire June 30th, 2019."
"For a term to expire June 30th, 2019."
"In New Rochelle, New York, to the best of my ability."
"In New Rochelle, New York, to the best of my ability."
Congratulations. If you could please sign there. Wanted to start with, I wanted to make sure everybody was aware that we, I think we announced it at a prior meeting, that the Board had received a Freedom of Information Law request under New York state law from the Hudson...
Hudson Valley Justice Center.
Hudson Valley Justice Center, related to a number of matters, and I won't rehash it. But it's, the Board decided proactively to post all of the FOIL requests online, so it's been, it's been online on the library's website for probably...
Two, three, two weeks, three weeks? Over three weeks.
Over three weeks. So there's approximately 700 pages of documents in line with the FOIL request, including the original request from the Hudson Valley Justice Center. So if anybody's interested in reading that, it's available online. I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that.
Seven hundred pages, so...
Yeah, seven hundred pages of documents. So we are actually going to go into a brief executive session to discuss a real estate-related matter, which should take us, I'd say, no more than ten minutes, and then we'll continue with the meeting as we normally do. I make a motion to go back into... I make a motion to go back into session.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And sorry, everybody, that we had to ask you to leave there for a minute. Sorry. So we'll continue with sort of the, continue with the agenda. So the downtown development update. So we, as a Board, I guess a couple things. There will be no vote in the foreseeable future on any sort of agreement with RXR or their affiliates. What we are going to do, we, the Board does still feel strongly that it's our duty to explore opportunities to enhance the facility. That's always our responsibility as a Board. And so what we're going to do is we're going to form a needs assessment committee of the Board. The Board has several committees, those of you that know, that come to the meetings, we have several committees that do different things. We're going to form an ad hoc committee that we're calling the Needs Assessment Committee that is going to be comprised of Deirdre, Gray Clark, Whitney Barrett, and Corey Galloway. And the Needs Assessment Committee is going to, their goal is going to be to do a couple of things. It's going to be to, we have a strategic plan, the library has a strategic plan that was done a number of years ago. It's going to be to take that strategic plan and look forward into the future and try to do an assessment of what this, you know, what we will need to be as a library in the future to really serve our community and what, you know, our community will become in the future. So that's, that's one piece of it. And then the other piece that the committee will do is set forth principles that the Board will require if we are to explore any redevelopment opportunities in, you know, in the, you know, in relation to the rezoning that was done. We will provide further updates to this group, and we're just forming the committee tonight, so the committee has not met and has not talked about anything. But we will provide further updates in this forum, as we normally do, in terms of how the, how the committee will operate and how the committee will engage with key stakeholders, et cetera. And it's expected that this will, this will not be, you know, a committee that will meet once and then come out with findings. This is a committee that will, you know, this will be measured in months, not weeks, in terms of what the committee will be doing. So that is the update. And with that, we will go to the public discussion. Adam Deutcher.
Hello, everybody. I haven't been here lately. I want to say, first of all, congratulations, Whitney, congratulations, Corey. Do you remember we met in the restaurant that time? I just want to say congratulations to you all. You know, obviously, this, this election, I believe, was, the most voters came out in quite some time to vote for our Library Board of Trustees, so obviously, the people, you know, you said things that resonated with the people, and I'm glad that you're here to represent us people. I'm happy to hear about the fact that there will be no vote about anything related with RXR sometime soon, and I think it's, I mean, I couldn't agree more that we need to figure out what this community needs for the library before entering into any binding agreement with a developer that already has so much going on in the city. We definitely don't need to give them more than we would ever hope to get from them. So congratulations, good to see you both here, you know, signed it officially, and see you both soon.
Thank you. Do you want to, did you want to go?
I'm going to pass.
Okay.
Congratulations. You're not going to say anything?
No? Yeah.
Mrs. Oliver, would you like to say?
Exactly.
Okay. Damon, Mar.
Testing, testing.
For that, okay.
We're on video now, you gotta, you gotta use the mic.
Absolutely, thank you. Well, it's great to be back, and congratulations again, and thank you for many years of faithful service, Mr. Quentin Jacobs.
Yes!
I thought I'd take this opportunity, speaking as a citizen now, but having had several years' experience on this Board, and just a couple of months' experience on a, in a different political office, to talk about things that a lot of you folks have heard from me before, but maybe the new members haven't, and, you know, repetition is the mother of learning, so you'll hear some of this again. First, we need to talk about, in doing this assessment, of course, we have to talk about who our stakeholders are. And I've already said, our most important stakeholder here is about that tall. Ma'am may not speak English, but her mother doesn't speak English, and they're both learning to, you know, well, she's a little girl, is learning to read and write English and Spanish. The mother may be taking a course here, and they both walk to the library. After that, of course, I mean, the patrons, the patrons are the most important stakeholders. The conservatives of this place, the employees, the director and the employees are a very important constituency. The materials themselves, you know, now, those of us have fewer books, this is where the books are going to be, and they require a lot of space, and the other, you know, the other materials we have. And then there's the taxpayers, you know, taxpayers are not the highest on the list, I don't think, in this kind of institution, but they deserve some consideration as well. And so, you know, keeping those things in mind, I had put on my thoughts of the things you would want to ask for, because you, you know, you're not, you're, you have a stewardship here, but it's not just, it's not just about money. Part of it is about money and what you can do with it. I mean, every private institution downtown area, both corporations, businesses, and, you know, I know of religious institutions, looking at their options, because they're looking at what they can do to further their mission. And if you're a church, and what you're doing is feeding the hungry, helping to house the homeless, counsel kids, have kids after school, well, if you can work some kind of deal that retains your independence, or gives you another place, or you retain your place and give part of your property, and raise a lot of money to do those things, you know, I see nothing wrong with that. And there are churches who've already sold off property, there's a church that's going to have two floors of its church and a tower over it. Stuff is happening. Stuff is happening out there, and, you know, I think all the churches are exploring their options, and they would, and their trustees, or their vestrymen, or whatever they have, the clergy would be failing their responsibilities if they didn't do so. So this is, this was my wish list. I'll read it real quickly, because it's on the website, it's on there for a while, it was after I've already been talking about this for a couple of years. Okay, number one, new state-of-the-art library of the future must be adjacent to Library Green. The main entrance and main interior atrium must be visible from the green and vice versa, and accessible by foot from the green without intervening automotive traffic. For example, if placed in a space that is currently the parking lot behind the CVS, then Lawton Street would become a pedestrian mall and/or part of an expanded green. By the way, the green, as I was discussing with somebody, it would take acts of three different levels of government to touch the green, to make the green smaller, and I pledge that, you know, that's the one thing I would be out there in front of the bulldozer for if they tried to eliminate the one green space and kind of our central green here. Two, such new facility would have at least as much usable space as the current one, with additional improved exhibition, performance, classroom, and conference space. The new facility cannot be set wholly in basement space, devoid of a sense of natural light and air. And if a multi-story mixed-use building, the library must have control of separately functioning utility, tech, elevator, HVAC, and other mechanical systems, and must also be otherwise protected in its legal form, for example, commercial condominium, which you have ownership of rather than a lease. And protection against a fall and the financial fortunes of the rest of the building or other occupants thereof, in other words, protection against the white elephant problem, or see-through building problem that you might have. Three, in order to assure the proper maintenance of such new facility in support of the expanded programming permitted in same, a substantial cash endowment should be funded by the developer in addition to the costs of construction. Four, full move-in at the fully functioning new facility before full surrender and demolition of the old, the Yankee Stadium model, to avoid the Danelle-type long-term or even short-term limbo for the library. Five, community benefits agreement, at least as rigorous as that worked out regarding city-owned properties, and as it turns out, much more rigorous, I would say, to be applied to projects on both the library's current footprint and on any proposed new location, including enhanced affordable housing requirements, that is above 10% of AMI, excuse me, above 10% of the units. Local hires for demolition, construction, and permanent workforce, and union hires or prevailing wage provisions. Six, here's where I get funny, oh boy. And for those of you who insist on arriving by automobile, yes, there should be some parking. And then I said I've been making the same basic points for about two years ago, and this is about two years since then, but just flesh it out a little more with each iteration. The longer it takes the developer to make a proposal, I suppose the more time I will have to think of more and hear more ideas from the public. And indeed, I have more things that we have to watch for. Yeah, at least, I would think at this point, having seen what the quote-unquote new Danelle Library looks like, you want at least two floors above ground level to give it a sense of air and space. Green, don't shrink it, but maybe it can be expanded. Out into Lawton Street, it could be expanded into this footprint if they want to move the library to a different footprint, part of this footprint could be a more expanded green, because we have no other green space around here, there's no playground for the children in this area. That would be something you would look at. Community benefits, I've become a little more sophisticated about what you can ask for. You could ask for project labor agreements, you can ask for apprenticeship programs, you can ask that, both for the project that presumably goes here, and the project that rebuilds the new library. You don't go with the 80%, you ask for some 30% and 50% of AMI housing. You know, we don't, you don't hold all the cards here, but you hold some, and you want to do this in a socially responsible way, just as I hope churches will, they don't just go for the money, they say, well, the construction should benefit the community in certain ways as well, beyond just giving us money. We want to, you know, we have some cards to play, let's see if we can do, we can engender some of these social benefits by virtue of the process. Now I can take a breath? Because I think I may have gone over my four minutes?
You did.
Maybe.
Well, thank you for the courtesy, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
My apologies, but my daughter's team did win their little softball championship. My husband is the coach, so you see that.
So we'll move on to the approval of the minutes.
We have two sets of minutes, public hearing and the regular...
So we have to approve them both separately?
Please.
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the budget hearing.
Yep, a second.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Does anybody have any comments on the second set of minutes for the main meeting? I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the main meeting on May 3rd.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes approved?
We do, for the new members, we do get those, you know, in the email, so you'll always be able to, a week before.
Yep, we get those for the new members. We do get the minutes ahead of time, a week ahead of time, so you'll always be able to look at them, so I know we're looking at them now, but we actually get them a week ahead of time.
Thank you. Financial, I guess, before we go into the financial reports, you know, thank the public, I don't think we've met since the election, so we sincerely thank the public in the city of New Rochelle, the electorate that voted for approving our budget. You know, the school district didn't have an outcome such as we did, and so we're very grateful for the support of the public in enabling us, you know, through that budget to, you know, continue to meet the needs of the community, and we, as some folks will remember, have actually added some additional services, you know, with this budget, with the 3.91% increase. So thank you, you know, all for your support, those of you here tonight, those of you watching on the, on the video, we really appreciate it. So moving on to the financial reports, is there anything that you want to highlight, Tom?
Not really. We're heading in a breakneck speed to the end of the fiscal year. The Board has many warrants to sign. We're in good shape financially as we will conclude the fiscal year, of course, at the end of June. I think at the July meeting, we will have a report that will summarize budget activities for the year that will have just passed. But we are in good shape as we end the year. It may, I'm seeing a headway from our administrative assistant. We may not have a total picture, but we'll be, we'll be getting close. I know the school district will be closing their books and our books in the near future.
Okay, wonderful. We look forward to that report. Anything statistics-wise you want to mention?
No, nothing exceptional, except that we're busy, and we're looking forward to a far busier July and August. Those are amongst our busiest months in terms of activity. Our library's going full guns in terms of programming, people are using the library in different delightful sorts of ways, so we anticipate that we'll have great things to share as we go forward in the new fiscal year.
Wonderful, thank you. I know Dr. Gray isn't here, do we have any sort of WLS report?
No, no, we don't. I have a director's meeting next Thursday, which we'll be able to share some information, but we're, again, the things seem to be moving forward, funding looks pretty stable for the Westchester Library System. And just one small issue that I'll mention in my report, there is another round of state construction grant monies, and this year, more than ever, more than my 12 years here, so we fully intend to take advantage of that to continue our program to improve our fiscal plan.
Well, with that, we'll let you roll right into your director's report.
Okay, all right, thank you, Chuck, that was an easy segue. Again, in terms of grants, New York State Construction Grant, we are working on the Theater HVAC Grant, and we will hopefully be able to close this grant out, not in June, but sometime in July, and we'll have been lucky enough to take advantage of $82,000, approximately, to improve our facility relative to our Theater HVAC system, which, as you folks well know, in the summertime, you freeze because it's far too cold, in the winter, you broil because it's far too hot. But this project will take care of that issue, and we're excited about that. And once it's done, we can close that grant out, and that's always a relief for us. In regards to other grants, we are waiting on a formal notification that the $275,000 Gateway Project Grant has been approved by the state. That, of course, is for the area surrounding the circulation space, security, patron self-checkout, a gate to allow us to close off the library yet keep the lobby, theater, and meeting room open. So that is something where hopefully we'll get a, we'll get some sort of formal notice, and then expect to see the money, perhaps July, August, possibly even September of this year. In terms of another grant that, that we're moving forward on, and we're feeling very excited about, is through the auspices of Senator Stuart Cousins, and also Dr. Gray, who visited her office, myself, and Kira Aiello, our staff member, we have a chance of receiving a $100,000 grant towards the circulation desk. It's an economic, it's, it's an economic development program grant, ESDAP grant. We had approached her, she reached out to us just in the last few weeks, said, please, please submit the grant. We got it together in 24 hours, we had everything ready, and so now we're, yeah, we had everything ready, yay. Right, just hoping that we get it, or at least get a portion of it. What it means for the foundation fundraising effort, I'm not quite sure, but I know Chris Sullen and the Foundation Board would welcome some assistance in that area, so keep our fingers crossed.
Is there anything we can do to help with that? Is there anything the public can do to help?
That's a good question. I could, I'm happy to reach out to Senator Stuart Cousins' office and find out if that's something. You know, I'm wondering if what happens to this grant is, like most grants, it goes into the labyrinth that is Albany, and, you know, it's evaluated by Economic Development, the Dormitory Authority, I'm not quite sure, but I'll find out, because if we could have positive support from the Board and from our public, maybe that would ensure a better likelihood of receiving the money, which would be great. In terms of, in terms of our grant situation, let's see what else. We're actually working on a grant to go to a family foundation for Wi-Fi hotspots, in which we're hoping to receive money so we can purchase Wi-Fi units that patrons could borrow and then could take to their home.
Oh, really? That's pretty cool.
It's very exciting. It's a real digital divide project, and it's been, it's been successful in places as close as New York City, and all over the country, and so this is something that I'm really sort of passionate about. Our IT head, Daniel O'Gerry, has made a connection, actually through my Public Library Association Conference, there's a fellow who is spearheading the New York Public Library Project, Daniel Lanzman, our Daniel and their Daniel are going to be meeting in a week, to just get a sense of how it works at New York Public, much bigger system, lots more people, but what we're looking for is information, experience. We don't want to recreate the wheel, we probably will have a different approach, for obvious reasons, but this is something that we're excited about. I think we have a really good shot at getting a significant amount of money to be able to fund this entirely through that, through that grant.
That's great.
So that's, that's, it's an exciting thing, and I will keep you all posted as we, as we push forward. Let's see what else. Chuck mentioned the recent vote, and I also, the staff, want to thank the community for their support. It was wonderful, we know it was an unusual year with a different outcome for the school district, but certainly we're excited about the support, and I promise you, we're going to move forward and continue to provide the best possible library services for you. And just as an example of the sorts of things that this, this new budget will provide us, we've already started the process of working with Rebecca Mazin, who is our job coach, to provide a series of workshops over the course of next year that will be targeting people who are seeking employment. And the workshops could relate to better resumes, or how to present yourself in an interview, or how do you use LinkedIn to get a better job. So that's, thanks to this budget vote, we're going to be able to enhance how we connect with our public. Another area, again, thanks to the, thanks to the recent vote, is our enhancement of our materials budget, and it's going to benefit the community across the board in all sorts of collection areas, but one collection area that I'm very excited about, that we'll have a meeting next week about, are e-Spanish books. And we have a vendor that's terrific, that we will have access to over 20,000 Spanish-language titles online, and it represents literature, books from Central and South America, and so that's, again, this is something that I've been dreaming about, I've been, actually been talking with the vendor for years, said, don't have the money yet, we're going to get there, and this was the year, we got there, so thank you. So, so, so all of that.
And the bandwidth, did we...
We did, we have, we have better bandwidth, thank you all for that, and we may be going back again, because, you know, this world is such an unusual one, where the more you add, the more you need, and bandwidth is being consumed at a tremendous level, so we're, we're going forward there. One item that I'd like to bring to Chuck's attention, which is the decision...
What have I done?
No, you, well, you know, I don't know how to break the news, but no. In all sincerity, you folks all have a copy of next year's Board meeting schedule, and what I would invite you to do is to look at, look at the schedule, let, decide whether or not these dates work or not, and perhaps we could have a vote tonight to adopt it, and then from there, we can announce on our website, we can let Barbara Davis and the community relations staff know.
Is November on a Tuesday because of Veterans Day?
Um, I don't know, is that, is that a typo?
I don't know. I don't know.
Maybe it's got...
Is the eighth a Tuesday? I don't have my calendar.
The eighth is a Thursday.
Oh, okay, good. We did move off of Valentine's Day.
So are you asking us whether we... So, are you asking us whether we, are we supposed to approve these tonight?
Or you could approve them in July?
I mean, are they, are they basically the second?
For the most part, yeah.
Except for the May meeting.
Well, the, the September one is not, because we actually, in this room, have a primary. And it, it's just seems to us impossible.
It's the third Thursday.
And then February, you said, is the third one as well?
Right. It's because, but you can move it back to Valentine's Day. I just.
No, no.
Preserving our romantic relationships are important.
Have you cross-checked against, like, major religious?
I did.
Okay, great. I mean.
The second, the one in May is always that early.
It's, by, by law, we have to have it early so that we can have our public budget hearing, then, you know, presumably go forward from there. And then, we are able to send out our annual, our annual newsletter message.
Yeah. So, it's, to Chuck's point, it's the same as it's been the last.
Pretty much.
Do I need to make a motion to approve it?
Yeah, I think so.
Should we, is everybody comfortable? I make a motion to approve the, the dates, as noted, for the 2018, 2019 meetings, with the exception of correcting the November 8th one to be read Thursday, not Tuesday.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. That's great. Fairness.
Wait, wait. Mary?
Whitney. You seconded, right? Yeah.
Next, I'd just like to highlight the fact that our foundation is having its annual meeting next Tuesday night, 7:00 at Posto Restaurant. So, if the Board is planning to attend, please let Chris Sellen know, or let me know, so I can let Chris know. I believe there's a fee of $45, I think.
Forty-nine. I'll be there.
Okay.
It's Tuesday when?
I believe, it's this Tuesday. Yeah, 7:00 PM.
Nineteenth.
Yep.
I cannot forget.
Having mentioned that, the foundation bylaws require that the Board agree to the members of the foundation. So, there are seven Foundation Board members serving who have been re-elected, but the Board needs to verify and support that decision, as well as a new Board, a new Foundation Board member. And I need two separate votes. Or, no, we could do one vote for, for both. I don't think it would be an issue. First of all, the, the Foundation Board members who are seeking reelection would be, starting with the letter A, Cheryl Archibald, Amy Bass, Judith Factor, John Gero, Timothy Idony, Christina Sellen, and last but not least, James Swinehart. And so, the new person who will join the Foundation Board, if the Board agrees, is someone that we all know well and love, Hayna Just Michael. So, with that, I would ask for a motion to support the reelection or election of these Board members to the New Rochelle Public Library Foundation Board.
I make a motion to elect these officers, or these people, to the Foundation Board.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. At this meeting, the foundation will vote on our annual grant. This year, the grant will be smaller in number, only because they, the foundation has embarked upon a, a campaign, a development campaign, to fund the match for our Gateway Project. So, what we are asking the foundation to support this year is a stripped-down budget of just three items that total approximately $20,000. The first item is the continuation of the very popular Museum Pass program, which they have funded for over six years and has achieved quite a bit of success and growth each year. The second, the second option is something that we're very excited about, which is an enhancement of our summer programming. As you folks know, our summer programming traditionally ends in mid-August. However, parents' interest in having attractive, educational, interesting programs continues usually up to the beginning of school year. And when Barbara Davis and Community Relations conducted a survey regarding, you know, the successes, concerns, questions, almost universally, people said, "Would you consider providing additional programming from August 15th onward?" Barbara listened. She put together a package of programs that will extend into, through August. That is something that the foundation has agreed to support. And so, I'm hoping that Tuesday night, we'll get it formally locked in, and we'll have more programming through the year, that summer portion of the year.
Those last two weeks of August tend to be the most expensive and no, nothing available. So, that's great.
I remember. I used to, bother me. I remember. So, so that's really exciting. And the third one is just a physical plant improvement. As you folks know, we have one very nice meeting room and some other meeting rooms. We only have two study rooms in this 60,000-plus square foot facility. It was a quirk of the, of the building. What we're planning to do is to add two additional study rooms, so that people, again, can find the space in, you know, two, three, four, and, and number two, study in a quiet place where they're not disturbing their neighbors, and their neighbors aren't disturbing them.
Tom, where are those going to be?
On the second floor, Deirdre. And they're going to be adjacent to the computer, the computer center that overlooks Ruby D. Green. And we have.
What's there now?
It's really just sort of open space. And we've been looking at ways to try to, again, enhance the building to meet the needs of the public. And the public is always telling us, "We need more of this." And because we have these great and talented custodians who can do it, really, on our dime, but with the materials funded by the foundation, one study room, and one will be funded by our Friends Group in memory of Levita Haskell, who was a friend who died earlier this year at the age of 96, and was the last original surviving Friends Board Member, and came up, came into the library to the, to, just the week before she passed, and volunteered. So, that, that study room will be, and will be dedicated to her name, her memory. So, she was quite a woman. So, so that's the third spoke in that wheel. And so, that's that. And final thing I want to share with you is, let's see, is the, is the Friends, wherever that, where my notes are. The Friends Book Sale will be in July. It will be the, the second Friday and Saturday of the month. This date I don't have right in front of me, but it's different. This year, it's usually the first, but because of the July 4th holiday, we're moving it. And so, and so that's it. That's it for my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, she went, looked here.
Yay. How about, let's get a look at the trophy. How cute.
Everything happening in the same hour. I think it's a kisser, her cross championship.
So cute. Very cute.
It's really sweet. It was her coach. That's so sweet.
It's like the Stanley Cup.
It was the bad news, bad news bears for a while. Trust me, we were not anticipating this.
So, do we have a personal report?
We do. Fairly brief one. Very sadly for us, but happy for our social media coordinator, Sarah Papa.
No.
Sarah has, Sarah has left, Sarah Papa. But Sarah was a native of Ireland who came here, stayed here, met a New Rochelle fellow, got married. But she missed Ireland, and she and her husband decided to, very sadly, more or less, leave, leave here and went back to Ireland. We'll, we'll miss her. She was great.
She was so.
Great, great person, great, great, effective person.
On Instagram.
So, Sarah, so Sarah has left. Her, her last day of employment was May 4th. Her salary was $53,361. And I would ask for a motion to accept her resignation.
No.
Well, she has to come back then.
You made the motion?
Second.
I mean, I really.
All in favor? Aye. Quinn made the motion, and Deirdre seconded.
And, and just as a sidebar, Sarah is still working for us as a contract person until we get somebody in the job. Even though she's in Ireland, she can still help us with our website, our social media. It's a short-term solution until then our next person comes. And in regards to that, we've approached the city personnel office and the Civil Service Department, because we would like to fill that position, but we're making one change. We'd like to add videography duties to the, to the job. And so, I'm hoping that Civil Service Commission will approve that. And as part of that job, we'll have our person here videotaping, and also be available when, and when necessary and possible, to videotape other library programs and events. We do have a new hire. I'm really excited about our new staff member. It's a bilingual library clerk position hourly, and her name is Kilsey Movaden, and her date of hire was June 4th. So, she just started. She's actually on the desk tonight, and she looks like a great addition to our staff. Of course, is fluent in Spanish and English. Her salary is $18.49 per hour, and I'd ask for a Board motion to accept her hire and welcome her to our library.
I'll make a motion.
Oh, it's his first motion.
I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Thank you. I'm done.
Oh, you're done? Okay.
Yep.
Sorry.
I know, Chuck.
No, no. Let's see. The committee reports. Budget Committee, Budget Committee has no report.
I don't, we don't have anything.
Building and grounds?
I, I have a report.
Building and grounds.
Yep.
The reason we're here.
The reason we're here is because the Theater HVAC Project is moving forward. And it's moving forward at a pace that we embrace. It's on time, on target, no change orders. There's been one little delay. We're trying to get the city permission to drop the permit for the rigging company to drop the HVAC unit here. And I made a phone call today. I think we're set. I'm assuming that we'll get permission on Monday of next week, and the rigging company will come and will, will be closing off Lawton Street for that time period. We'll come on Wednesday of next week. But I'm, I'm really excited to tell everybody that we're on time, on, we're on budget, and we fully expect to open the theater back to our summer programming kickoff in, on July 9th.
Great.
And one thing I forgot to mention, speaking of summer kickoff, we, we have our summer reading game beginning on June 23rd, and probably Daniel wants to talk about that, and I will let him do that. But so, so Theater HVAC Project on target. Another project that's been longstanding, but we're ready to conclude, is the Huguenot Children's Library Walkway, which you know has been a, been in a state of disrepair for a period of time, basically because the, the campaign over 25 years ago for personalized bricks that were donated, that were monies donated to the Partnership for the Huguenot Children's Library, and a personalized brick was put out for our donors. Some of those bricks were in a state of disrepair. The library assumed responsibility. We worked with Miki Fasina, who, wherever you are, thank you, Miki. She has spent a tremendous amount of time, she and her family, recreating the bricks that needed to, that needed to be replaced. We hired a mason. The work is almost done. We actually are meeting next week to go over the final components. We think there are just a few bricks that are left that we need to order, and we expect to, we're hoping that it will be fully functional for the, for the beginning of summer programming at the Huguenot Children's Library.
That's great.
Yep.
Can I ask one Building and Grounds committee, the letters that are, have fallen down from the sign in the front, what's the, like?
When are we going to get that done?
They've been down for quite, at least one of them's been down for quite a while.
Let me talk to, you know, I know the construction company is, is on this project, but I'm not quite sure to what degree.
Yeah, because it just looks shoddy.
Yep. That's a good point. Thanks for reminding me. Okay. Letters. Get to it. So, I'm done, Chuck.
Thank you. Community Relations?
Yeah, so, picking back with what Tom was saying, on the 23rd, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, summer.
Summer reading kickoff here at our wonderful, wonderful library. There's going to be some great event. It's going to be a great event. I believe the theme is Lib, Library Rock is the theme of the 2018 Summer Reading Game. And they'll continue on with the official start of it on July 9th. So, if you register from pre-K all the way to elementary school level, 5th grade, they'll be including other programs like architect workshops, creative writing, Mexican dance, and different performances, all part of the July 9th to August programming. But the kickoff will be the 23rd, so I encourage you to come out. And then, on Saturday, at the bid market, I just want, wanted to share. So, the city of New Rochelle is under what's this thing called Bloomberg's Mayor Challenge. And what they're doing with the bid idea and.
It's called Idea Lab?
Yes, Idea Lab. Yes, yes. Pretty much, it's called immersive technology. So, what they're doing on Saturday, I invite all of you to come out, because they're going to give people in the community the opportunity to try out augmented reality and virtual reality, and pretty much using the technology and how our development in our city and projects are, are, are happening, and even public space. So, you'll be able to look at parks in different areas of our city, and kind of walk through it with new development or new designs. And then, you can put, like, you know, we would prefer a park here, or a slide there, or something here, or a fountain here. And you can, that's going to be all day in the market from 10 to 2, if I'm not mistaken.
I think it's, yeah, when the market starts until the end of the market.
Yeah, 11 to 2. But I know it ends at 2. So, yeah.
I just, can I add a little bit about this?
Yeah, yeah.
So, this is, this is something that is, will enable the public to experience the change, some of the changes that are coming in a really comfortable way, prior to the change is actually happening. And so, you can get a sneak preview. If anyone has vertigo, watch out. Tends to be a 360-degree experience. But you can, you, I think they're often like place-based apps. And so, when you're in the coordinate region where the change will be taking place, you can, you'll have the app, and that will become available. I think that's how this one works, too. But they're also conducting interviews and would like feedback from the public. So, if anyone can make it and is willing to talk about their excitement, or, or, you know, things that they would like to see, I know that they're really interested in feedback from.
Yeah. So, yeah, they're going to be collecting a lot of feedback and data to see, number one, is the technology worth using, or what other technology they can bring, and also just data about the projects and development that, that are happening. And then, one thing that I would, I would love to have the Board, if you're available, to come out and support, as well as the community, the city, school district, non-for-profit organizations, and I'm hoping that the, the library can also hop on board, and, and the Chamber. On May 27th, we're going to be doing a.
June 27th.
June 27th, sorry. June 27th. Yeah, yeah. June 27th at 12:00 in front of City Hall, we're doing this launch called Ready Launch, R-E-A-D-I. And Ready is a social-emotional curriculum that is focused on youth and young adults to get them job-ready. So, it's easy to teach them how to do a resume and interview, but it's also about the social, emotional, like, how to respond to your boss if you come late and he yells at you. A lot of our youth are quick to just quit. So, the social-emotional curriculum is free for organizations across the board. It was put together by several agencies, the Department of Labor, Department of Social Services, and, and businesses, what they were looking for in, in having youth and young adults ready to work. So, to bring a positive spin to our city with a lot of things that have been happening to our city, we really want to put this positive social-emotional curriculum and a whole bunch of people on, are on board, inviting nonprofit organizations, clergy that work with youth and young adults. The curriculum is going to be available for free. There's going to be training that's also going to be happening to train how to use a curriculum. I, I will be conducting the training. But the, the event's going to happen on the 27th of June at 12:00 in front of the City Hall steps.
The meeting after.
And then, the trainings, you'll have a schedule throughout the summer. There are two-day trainings for like three hours for those.
This is the kickoff.
This will be the kickoff, the launch. So, we really want to encourage youth to come out, business leaders, members of the community, to really show support that we're really pushing this positive learning environment. And we want our young people to work. We want them to get experienced to work. I can remember getting my first job and, you know, working at a restaurant and, and learning what customer service is, you know. And you can use those skills down the line. So, again, that's June 27th on City Hall steps. So again, that's June 27th on City Hall steps, right in front, and they're gonna lay out the big banner, and PR and press, and they're also inviting some, you know, political people around our community to come and show support, so hope to see people there.
That's great.
That's it.
Thank you.
Yeah?
Can you, I mentioned it to you guys, can you, who's on this committee? You and you?
I'm not on the, I'm not on it. The community.
Uh, Community Relations?
Can Community Relations look into the possibility, and I talked to folks in the school board, to perhaps us doing the undoing racism training? Can you just look into it? See if it's like, talk to David Peters and come back to us with what it would mean, kind of what it would look like for us, and et cetera, et cetera. And make a recommendation on that?
Awesome.
It's something that I'd like to do, but I'd love to get more people. Do you want me to say my name?
No.
But thank you for these, it's because of our Community Relations. Yes, thank you, Daniel, for these beautiful.
Oh, yes. You're very welcome.
Awesome.
Yeah, but I think that's a good idea.
And so I'll give you David's. Or is it, you specifically want David Peters as opposed to some, like if they were?
He usually gets it for the city. So whoever, it's the same group that does it. They've all done it. We can ask them to. People Survival for some strange thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's some strange, but, yes, People Survival by Ann. So they are like the ones who do it throughout the country, and he's the person locally who does it.
Yeah, I, I think that's a great idea, and I, and I also want to kind of see if that's something, also the mental health first aid, to kind of, something that, it's, it's happening in our community, so it's something to, that we can look into as well and see.
Because of that, I brought it, that to my job, because we have adult students.
Yeah.
Just sort of helping to, we're even, so thank you, we're looking to it for my own staff.
For sure.
Great.
I have a question. We had discussed during a meeting about staff members of the library receiving Narcan training. Did anything ever happen with that?
We're still looking at that. There were some policies, recommendations from New York State Library, but we're working towards that, and we should have something available in the next fiscal, early in the next fiscal year.
And will board members be allowed to participate?
Of course.
If we want to?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I don't think, oh, so Finance, Treasury, and Audit, actually, we do have a report. Two items. We're still waiting for the school district to sign the agreement that stipulates their responsibilities with respect to financing our operating and capital needs, which has been outstanding for quite a while. Obviously, the school district has a lot going on, but I don't.
We've really been.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a little frustrating. So, yeah, I think we've, you know, Deidre was kind enough to follow up with the school board president, and Tom's been following up with the relevant members of the administration, but I think we should just continue to do that, and I don't, I don't.
Sorry, I just made a face. I'm just saying, you probably should expect delays.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't think it's at a point where we need to send like a nasty, like, little letter from our lawyer, because they're still, they're doing what we need, but, yeah, we should just keep it on.
They're, they're doing what we need. They are. Without an agreement, but they are.
Yeah. So that's that. The other item, we, at a previous meeting, had discussed the fact that we have this bond anticipation note, which was, you know, a short-term debt instrument used to finance, you know, some of the capital projects that we had done, and now that we have the final tally for what the capital projects has, have actually cost, it's prudent to convert the bond anticipation note into an actual bond. And so we, we already did a resolution to do that, right?
Yes, we did.
And so the only item, I think, is that we have to, what is gonna pay $12,000 for a rating?
Do, do we need to, Capital Markets, James Snanko has asked, do we want to assume the cost of asking Moody's to give us a rating, which would be $12,000 if they do? Typically, the interest rate would be lower. If we decide to eschew.
How much lower?
Twelve, it's hard, he couldn't quantify, because it's, it's, it's all sort of up in the air.
But it looks like he says here that if we don't do it, it's 20,000 to 30,000 in additional interest, if I read that correctly.
Right. He, he said that. He said unless a, a bank chooses to put in a bid, which they may, because it's such a small amount of money relative to that sorts of transactions that are typical, and if that were to be the case, then we might see a, a better, a, a better offer. So it's, it's very problematic.
I think we should, I think we should do the rating for the $12,000.
Which means that's a fee that we'll pay upfront?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Okay.
Because, and just the rationale is that it's gonna save, should save 20,000 to 30,000 dollars in interest payments.
Or a portion of that annually, right?
Yeah, a portion of that annual.
I think we're, we're being asked to have a motion.
Do you need a motion? Sure. I, I'm gonna make a motion that we, that the board approve approximately $12,000 to obtain ratings for our bond that we're gonna issue to replace our bond anticipation note.
Second?
All in favor? Aye. Approved.
Thank you, Chuck.
Keeping our financial house in order. I think that's the, nothing else from the Finance, Treasury, and Audit Committee, Personnel Committee.
Just one thing that Personnel will be meeting soon. Sorry, Personnel will be meeting. We're trying to come up with a date to do a review for our executive director, which is something that is required of, of our board. That's it.
Do you have anything, Personnel?
I do not.
Any reports from the Policy Committee?
No, not yet. We'll talk about.
We haven't, Matt and I.
No, we haven't, we have to meet, but I was thinking, with the new board members, we'd have to probably reassign folks into different committees?
Yes.
So it didn't make a sense, I didn't think it made sense to meet in May, when, June, when we're gonna roll over into something new in July.
Yes.
So once we sort of settle the new committee assignments, I know we wanna talk about email and things like that.
Yes, yes. And then anything on this broadcasting of the board meetings?
Um, actually, as you know, we now are on both of the local cable networks, and the city has sent a response to our response to the PEG grant, and some very minor changes, and I've reached out to our attorney with, asking for input. It seemed minor to my non-legal eyes, so we'll, we should be ready, hopefully in the near future, to provide the board with this agreement for their consideration and a vote in July. Meanwhile, we are continuing to tape. It's on our website, and it's also available on the two cable channels. Once this meeting is over, I'm gonna reach out to our contact regarding the local cable channels. He is Mr. Steve Brown, who was employed at the New Rochelle High School, and I'll get dates and times and, and share with you what the new schedule will look like, because it does change from month to month, depending upon our meetings, the length, school district meetings, their length, their number as well.
I plan my days based on when our meetings are gonna be on, so I need to know as soon as possible.
I will.
As a media star, Chuck, I respect that request.
Media star. We'll see, the links, though, work well, and they're edited very nicely. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Superficient, super clear, super great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
I, does anybody else have any other? Oh, I would be remiss.
Yes.
In, I want to pile on to what Damon said before, and thank our trustee, Quentin Jacobs, for his years, 10 years of service, 10 years of service to the board. Quentin? This predates me, but I know Quentin played a very meaningful role in driving the direction of the beautiful entrances that we have on the Lawton Street side and on the Memorial Highway side, and the lovely, what's the color called? Gray?
Moby gray.
Moby.
Some, I know, I, but Quentin was instrumental in, in getting those beautiful entrances done, so thank you for your time on the board, and we hope you'll stay involved with the library and what it, pass it over to you if you had any remarks you wanted to make.
I do. No. Should I? No, not so. I am profoundly grateful for the opportunity I have had to help in my own small way to contribute to the running of the central cultural institution of our community. Even though I am not going out as I would have preferred, it is only with a sense of gladness that I end my present term of service here. It has been an eventful 10 years, and I have had the pleasure of serving with people for whom I have had the highest regard. I only ask that when the returning of new trustees are sworn in at the next month's meeting, that each of them stands up and turn and says something about feeling at least a little bit bad that I was voted out.
Least they could do.
It would be really nice. Then I will be fully reconciled to the end of my tenure here. And I will take cheer at about 9:30 or quarter to 10 every second Thursday evening of each month, knowing that I am not, again, sitting on this stage pining for a precipitous adjournment. But this is not a clean break. Chuck has been kind enough to ask if I would consider continuing on with the CROCK. I would like to do that.
Wonderful, thank you.
Because it's the library. I would like to thank all the people involved that make this library work and make us trustees look good. That includes Tom Giuffino, the executive director for my entire term, who's diligent and congenial. Thank you for all you have done and the manner in which you do it. And for the wonderful staff, especially Jean and Mary, who must be underpaid for not only having to witness all the transactions of the board, but then having to commit them to print in the minutes. I would like to remind my fellow trustees that someday you might want to appoint an experienced veteran, should there be one of, another of those unexpected departures from the board. Someone who has a ready grasp of the issues, a proven track record, and is camera-ready. I'll be waiting by the phone. Thank you, good night, and I make a motion to adjourn. Who will second?
What a great exit.
I'll second. All in favor? Aye. That's great.